Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. So nice to see a few people out this morning after, I guess, what could be described as a rather large evening last night.[13.54][13.54](laughter) Present company included. I'm very pleased to welcome you to this morning's special session entitled "IDU, HIV, and Hepatitis C: Improving Access to Testing and Treatment for People Who Use Injection Drugs in Newfoundland and Labrador." We felt it was important, since CARA is being held in Newfoundland this year, to have at least one session to raise attention, to highlight, and to discuss some of the issues that we're dealing with here in this province. Over the past week, I certainly hope that you've had an opportunity to get out and see a little bit of St. John's and the surrounding area and get to know a little bit about what our province is all about. And many of you coming from larger centers like Toronto or Vancouver, Montreal, probably have a feeling that it's a pretty small town, it's kind of quaint, nice place, but it's a small town. And we're quite proud of that. But unfortunately, in some not-so-positive ways, we're also struggling with some big city issues, including an increase in injection drug use across the province. So this morning, you'll hear about the results of a provincial needs assessment that was recently conducted, as well as our preliminary plans for response. And we're also very fortunate to have two guests here to share their experiences in dealing with similar issues, in the hopes that we might be able to take away some lessons from what worked, or perhaps didn't work, and apply them to our own response. So I'm pleased to introduce this morning's panel. Our first speaker this morning will be Mr. Gerard Yetman, who's the Executive Director of the AIDS Committee of Newfoundland and Labrador. We're also pleased to have Marie Ryan, who's a researcher consultant with Goss Gilroy Research here in St. John's, Newfoundland. We're also pleased to have Zoe Dodd, who's a hepatitis C coordinator from South Riverdale Community Health Center in Toronto. And finally, last but not least, we're delighted to have Dr. Timothy Christie, who's the Regional Director of Ethics Services at Horizon Health Center in St. John, New Brunswick. Please join me in welcoming our panel.[141.12][141.12](applause)
Good morning. To begin, I just want to give you a little overview of this SafeWorks Access Program. The SafeWorks Access Program began informally in the early 1990s. In 2005, the program was formalized to respond to the increase in the use of intravenous drugs in St. John's and notably in Corner Brook on the western part of the island. So in 2005, we opened up two offices to respond to the crisis. Over the past two years, we found a dramatic increase in the number of needles and the number of individuals accessing the program. In a one-year period, the program was forced to go back for emergency funding to maintain the program. When we looked at our number of needles going out in 2012 to 2000 -- or 2011 to 2013, we had moved from under 100,000 needles to over 300,000 needles. At that point, we realized that we really needed to look at what was happening with IDU in the province, and what was the best way that we, as an organization, could respond. As a result, we hired Goss Gilroy, Marie Ryan, to conduct a needs assessment and an evaluation. One thing -- two things, or two main things that we wanted to look at was, what was the extent of drug use in the province? And two, how do we need to change our program to respond appropriately to that need? So I'd like to pass it over to Marie.[264.02][264.02](pause)
Morning, everyone. I've got my watch here. So thank you, first of all, for providing an opportunity to overview the research findings, because I think one of the key things for us in St. John's, and it's been referenced by Gerard, you know, is we are not a very big city in the context of the Canadian environment. But what we're seeing, of course, in many ways, is a response to the prosperity that we're having, and those of you from big cities who probably can really relate to that from here. And I don't think I have to go into, in detail, all of the associated harms with injection drug use, but we are seeing them all, from, you know, overdose, and the transmission of diseases, I guess, is the real focus of what we looked at. We were really interested to talk to injection drug users, and we did speak to 55 of them, which I think was quite astounding, given, you know, the realities of their day-to-day lives. But they were quite forthcoming with us, and one of the things we did focus on was what indeed was the reality of drug use, but what was the reality in terms of transmission of infectious diseases? So when we started to do this work, one of the things we also concentrated on was, of course, that swap operates within a harm reduction framework. And in our province, harm reduction has not been embraced fully by all of those that one would hope it would be, including health providers. There still remains a belief that harm reduction is a facilitator of injection drug use, and not a facilitator of people along a continuum from injection drug use to recovery. So we have tried, in our research, to demonstrate, both in discussing with those that we interviewed and as well the stakeholders, to try and bring some degree of understanding around what harm reduction is. So as Gerard has mentioned, what spurred the evaluation was that swap has experienced a 60-fold increase in the number of needles that have been distributed. So in 2005, which was when it began in its infancy, there were about 5,500 needles distributed. In 2012, there were 330,000. And in the first half of 2013, there were 220,000 needles distributed. That translates from what we can see at a base number to be about 650 people. We assume and know that there are natural helpers involved, so clearly the numbers that will be using the needles that we talked about is much higher than that. There's been a steady increase in the number of needles out; there hasn't been a steady increase in the number of needles in. The AIDS -- it's one of the areas that the AIDS Committee has seen sort of a wave up and down in terms of return of needles. But there's a real focus. It's one of the things that we talked about in our report, was the need to have a focus on the returning of needles. We are seeing more needles out in the community. The thing about the injection drug use, as many of you know, is that it's a very clandestine activity. So we're not really sure if -- how many more needles there are out there. What we do know is that people are finding more, and so people are beginning to feel that the problem is increasing. The question is, is the problem increasing, or is it just becoming more obvious as we start to focus on it? What I'd like to give you a little bit is a profile of the individuals that we talked to. So we did talk to 55 individuals. We primarily got responses from people in St. John's. There is a swap site in Corner Brook on the west side of the province, so that we did get some small return from there. And we got a number from Canada Post, because in a rural and remote province such as ours, we cannot feasibly, there's, you know, the money would be extraordinary. So one of the things we tried to look at as well is, what do we do to ensure that we can move beyond just the main cities and out to the rural areas? And one of the reasons is the number of needles that we're seeing going out to the rural areas. In central Newfoundland, there's a place called Grand Falls Windsor. It's a town of about 14,000 people. And in the first six months of 2013, we had 17,000 needles go there. And that was, again, it was quite astounding for that community. And in a discussion with the mayors in many of the communities that are affected by our research, what we discovered is nobody is burying their head in the sand, which was a very good finding. Because we're -- in talking to the mayors, you always sometimes feel that there's a need to create this facade of wellness. But the mayors in our communities are really tuned in to this, not sure what to do about it, which is part of what we are trying to do with the research and the findings and moving forward, but certainly they're aware it is there. So in terms of the profile of the people that we talked to, so those 55 injection drug users, 60% were male, 40% were female. They ranged in age from 18 to 61, but the majority of them were about 24 to 33. Three-quarters of them were identified as straight, about 20% as bisexual, 4% as gay. 75% were single, but 65% had children. We didn't ask them whether or not their children were in care. We felt that that might scare them off, particularly when we were trying to focus primarily on their injection drug use. One of the things that we've been talking about at length around this report is the effort to try and speak to people about who the individuals are. They are not -- I do a lot of work in homelessness, so I always say, you know, they're not the 20 to 45 alcoholic, drug-addicted homeless person. And the findings from our 55 individuals certainly can be extrapolated in that regard, when you understand that the majority of them had completed high school or some high school, and at least 33% had some post-secondary. Some had degrees, and about 20% were working or on employment insurance. It's that whole piece around, it's not me, it's not us, it's not my family. And yet, when we talk to people out around in different areas of the province, we focused on Labrador, as well as Concepcion Bay North, which is a community about 60, 70 miles outside of St. John's. It's a series of small communities. And the story that struck in my head, you know, Concepcion Bay North is a very small set of communities. But what stuck in my head was speaking to a service provider who told me that one of the client's houses had -- someone had entered the client, one of her client's houses, not related to a drug issue, but for another issue, and had found 500 needles and children in the house. So those are the kind of things that we're trying to put forward to people, that this can be anyone, and families and communities are in jeopardy. When we asked people when they first used drugs, most of them were between 13 and 14 years old. These were not necessarily injection drugs. Some indicated they began at age nine, prescription drugs, whatever was available. They shoot up at all times of the day and night. There was no schedule, depended on who they were, what they were doing, if they were working. Of the 52 who talked about it, most of them said they shot up about five times a day. But we did hear from people who said they shot up more than 10 times a day. They shot up everywhere, primarily within their own residences or a safe space, but they also shot up in, you know, their cars, out in the parks, public washrooms. It really didn't matter where they were. And in terms of the amount they spent on their drugs, most talked about $10 to $200 a day, but about 20% are spending, on average, between $200 and $900 a day. And again, you know, we have a sense of prosperity in our province. We still have a high degree of people who are living in poverty. So if you combine the living in poverty with the injection drug use, the cost of drugs, then you can see why, to some degree, there's been an escalation in, you know, break-ins, pharmacy break-ins, robberies, and certainly in drug-related activity. For the purposes of swap and looking at the crossover in terms of infection, we know that about three-quarters of the people we spoke to said they reused their own needles, because they couldn't get to swap, they couldn't be -- they didn't have access to anything that they needed. About 85% had been tested for infectious diseases. About 40% were positive for one or more infections, and about 7% had multiple infections. That could be hep A, B, C, and sexually transmitted infections. A lot of them, when asked about their own needle use and what they do with their needles, while most of them say they dispose of them properly, for us, in terms of community safety, between 6 and 13% said they just throw them away. There are resources in our province, but one of the big gaps is a long-term treatment plan. So we have short-term treatment, residential treatment, but when we asked those who inject drugs what their key need was, one of it was, we need a place where when we go and when we come out, we have a period of time to recover, and we have wraparound supports when we're finished. And one of the other things that we heard a lot about, which is not available in our province, is point-of-care testing. So I know I only have a couple of minutes, just to say that the findings from this research told us about the people. They also told us that one of the key elements that has been missing because of a lot of internal reorg within the AIDS Committee of Newfoundland and Labrador, as a result of staff changes, is partnerships. We can't deal -- you know, it cannot be done on its own, as many of you know. If you work in this sector, you know that this is not about me and my organization. It is about me, my organization, and the other 40 organizations, and the rest of the stakeholders, who need to be involved, from those in health, those in education, they need to get out in your communities and talk to people, and as well, inform people about the value of harm reduction. I started with harm reduction, I'm going to finish with harm reduction. It is a concept that is misunderstood in our province. It is one that needs to be much better understood, so that the individuals who are dealing with this reality every day have an opportunity to come to a place that someone understands them, doesn't judge them, provides them their support, whether that be clean needles, clean equipment, a referral somewhere to a service provider, or just an opportunity to talk about their lives. Because what we know is that the support works. People told us that their lives have been saved. And we believe that the AIDS Committee, through its ongoing rebuilding, as it brings a new human resources framework in play, and with the support of the health regions, because they've all come on board, as have the mayors, we believe that there's a real opportunity to try and support individuals who inject drugs, to create a safety net for them, support for them, and a safety net for our communities.
I feel a bit funny, speaking on this, since -- after coming after you guys, because I'm in a program that is very well-established. My name is Zoe Dodd. I'm the Hepatitis C Program Coordinator with the Toronto Community Hepatitis C Program. I work out of an organization called South Riverdale Community Health Center, which is situated in a neighborhood that is primarily of mixed income. The majority of people we see are people living in poverty who actively use drugs. Our needle exchange is one of the busiest needle exchanges in Toronto. We gave out 250,000 needles last year, 50,000 crack pipes. There are about 40 contracts through public health in the city of Toronto. And I would say that each neighborhood is like its own small town. People actually don't leave where they're from, they don't travel very far, they don't want to go very far. And so that's something that we take into consideration, is the geographical location that we're in. Public health pays for all of our equipment, and so we're never having to go without. That is always something that is a mandate from the province and from the public health departments. And it is also one of the reasons why I think we have one of the lowest transmissions of HIV in North America, because in the '90s, we were very proactive, establishing needle exchanges and giving out as many needles as people needed. The other thing that our organization does is 140 employees. 35 people on staff are active, current or former drug users. Majority of them are active drug users. And so a lot of the needle exchange work, the work around -- we have these satellite sites, which are the homes of people who use drugs, or who are dealers, who then distribute needle exchange supplies. We work with them, they do all the trainings that all harm reduction workers do. And I think that's really important, is engaging the community in the response to addressing HIV, hepatitis C, and drug use. I would also say that with the increase in wealth or prosperity for some people, it also has been an increase in poverty in this country, where we are seeing austerity at all levels of government, and massive cuts to social services, high unemployment rates amongst adults and youth, and that a lot of times -- and we also are living in a country with genocide and colonization, which has impacted the communities that we're working with greatly. So I run -- I coordinate a program around hepatitis C. So as a lot of people are aware, hepatitis C is one of the largest-growing epidemics amongst people who use drugs. It's also an epidemic where people who are using drugs have also been excluded from accessing healthcare. And our program started because of this massive discrimination going on within the healthcare system, to address the needs of people using drugs who are living with hepatitis C and hepatitis C and HIV. We do not turn people away because they're using drugs. We don't turn them away and not give them healthcare because they're somebody who uses drugs.[1202.27][1202.27](laughing) Thank you. So as we know, hepatitis C is a virus that's transmitted blood to blood, and we have about 7,000 to 8,000 new infections in the province, or across the country, every year. There are about 20% of people living with HIV are also co-infected with Hep C, and the majority of new infections are related to injection drug use. So it's affecting people in prison, injection drug users, Aboriginal people, homeless people. And there are loads of barriers to treatment, including stigma, discrimination, past negative experiences with healthcare. And then there's just, you know, our program started because we also wanted to bring Hep C treatment into the primary care. So doctors and nurses are the ones who've been treating Hep C within our organization since 2007, and specialists have been working with us as consultants. And as treatment advances, there may be less and less need for people to have to go to the hospital unless they're very sick, and we will hopefully be able to just do treatment within primary care settings, and it'll be much more easy and accessible for people who use drugs. Now, if only we could get pharma to not be so greedy.[1268.01][1268.01](laughter) And so we began 2006. We are three sites: Sherborne Health Center, Regent Park Community Health Center, and South Riverdale Community Health Center. I get the privilege of getting to work in two sites. Used to have to work in three, and then we got more funding, and I don't have to do that anymore, which is really nice. We have strong harm reduction underpinnings, and that's really important to us. So we see meeting people where they're at, it's a pragmatic approach, and I don't understand why we can't adopt harm reduction. It makes the most sense when we're talking about disease prevention. It doesn't make any sense to me that governments don't want to embrace harm reduction. When we're looking at the costs of things, so the cost of treating people around HIV-Hep C, it's very, very, very expensive. But it also talks to how we don't just care about people, and it's massive discrimination within our system that discriminates towards people who are using drugs, and especially people living in poverty, because that's really what we're talking about here.[1325.83][1325.83](laughing) This is our program model. So we are kind of under one roof, and so we do primary care, we have an infectious disease consultant who comes to talk to us regularly, a harm reduction program, and I coordinate groups. And that's what I started doing back in 2004. I've been doing them for 10 years. They're groups for people who use drugs, they meet every week, and they're harm reduction-based groups. It's also about building community and community development. I'm a strong encourager of groups. I think it's a great place, because people get socially isolated, but drug users have their own networks. And again, like, although we're a large city, we're also like a small town where we are. Everybody knows each other, people have grown up together, people have families that they've been neighbors with for a long time. So people all kind of know each other, too. And I think that the groups are a great place for people to meet, and also have this, like, commonality of having Hep C or Hep C and HIV. So I have to move quickly. This is our client profile, so this is from March to June. We've actually done a better job of getting more women involved in our program. We have a lot of men that come, and so we started a women's drop-in group to get more women, and did actually a lot of, like, going into the needle exchanges and talking to women to try to get more women, so we're a lot more representative. It's not so dominated by men. But the average age is about 48 years old. A lot of people are homeless or underhoused. 96% of the people that we see are unemployed, and have a history of incarceration, about 74%. Crack use is the number-one-use drug. People are poly-drug users. I know that here, talking to drug users here, that the drug that people use the most are pills. So -- and so we also have the same thing, people use a lot of pills, opioids. I will just say, I'm just going to jump through this, but we treat people who are living with Hep C. We've been treating people and people who are still, like, smoking crack all the time. And I know that there are some people who think, oh, you know, you shouldn't use stimulants more than three times a week, and then you shouldn't treat them, but we don't do that. We see people where we're at, you know, if that was the case, there would be people I work with, including coworkers, who would never have gotten treatment, and -- because it didn't matter what they were using, it was really about stability and if they were willing and interested.[1462.42][1462.42](coughing) So I just really wanted to talk about the involvement of people in programs. And I think this is the most important thing when we're talking about addressing the needs of people who use drugs, and especially when we're talking about HIV and hepatitis C. It is absolutely important that those people impacted are also involved. So we have people living with HIV involved in services for people living with HIV. It should be the same for things around involving people who use drugs, or involving people who have Hep C, and in meaningful ways. So finding ways in which not just volunteer basis, which is awesome, but also there needs to be funding, and people need to be paid for work. And I look at myself, I'm like, oh, I get to stand here. But I started out as a student, as a peer, and started working through a needle exchange that I worked at. And that's really important, because a lot of this is about purpose and meaning, and people do need purpose and meaning. We all do, that's why we're here, that's why we want the jobs we have. And so that's also important to a lot of people who use drugs. And that was actually what we found all the time when we were addressing Hep C, is that people also wanted to work in our program. They also wanted to be the ones delivering services, because they knew what it was like to do treatment, they knew what it was like to live with Hep C, they knew what it was like to use drugs, and that is very, very important. So there are a number of ways we do that. So we have a psychoeducational support group, we have a patient advisory board, so we have an advisory board for all our sites. It's people who use the services, it's people living with Hep C and HIV who are on our advisory board. Everything that we do has to go through them, we can't make any changes in our program. It's not a token thing. We actually, if we're going to do research, they have to approve it. If I'm going to come and speak at something, I show them what I'm going to present, I ask them for their feedback. We make sure that anything that's changing in our program goes through them. It is not like just some token setup thing, it's actually something where we actually listen and we do research together. They're also -- they were the ones who were like, we need a continuing care program post-treatment. We set up that because of them, and now two people from the program who used to be on the advisory board run that program. We did a peer training, we trained people for 16 weeks so that they could become workers in the program, because it isn't enough to just be like, oh, you use drugs, here's this job. It's a setup, a lot of times, for people. People may have other skills, some really awesome skills that they've gotten over the years, but they may not, you know, discussions need to be had about ethics and boundaries, and what that's like here, and what the complicated things that might happen when you're delivering service to someone you also know, who you also maybe use with, or someone, you know, you have beef with over the years. Like, these are things that have to be talked about, and they have to be able to be out in the open. So we had a training, it was 16 weeks, and then out of that, people applied for jobs, and we hired people into our program. And so we had turned down having another case manager. We said to the province, we don't want another case manager, we don't need another case manager. What we actually need are people with lived experience to then do accompaniments with people, to actually be able to talk one-to-one about being on treatment and using drugs, who actually know about what that's like to smoke crack and be on treatment, or what it's like to inject opiates and be on treatment. Like, we needed those people to be doing that work.[1659.01][1659.01](laughing) So this -- I'm just running, how many minutes? I got three. Okay. So I'm just going to switch over to group support and the board. So the board was established in 2010, and so, like I said, the board thing. And then we have the training. So the training was really important to us, and we're hoping to do another one.[1677.73][1677.73](pause) But it has been a big impact on clients, and it has been an impact in the way that we deliver services. Our needle exchange, in the way that people come into our needle exchanges, and then come into the hepatitis C program. It's been great that we've been able to treat a lot of people. If people could get access to treatment, we've had a lot of problems with the province and the criteria. We've had to turn away a lot of people who could have done treatment. We could be treating people right now if we had access to the new treatments, and I don't know when that's going to change. And then there are challenges. So, you know, people are in a marginalized group, they're very stigmatized, there's a lot of oppression, there's a lack of trust amongst healthcare providers. Even though our organizations, and even though we've done a good job of trying to include people, there are still people where you work who have a distrust, who do not like people who use drugs, who don't trust the people they're working with. And so it is important to find out what those are, what's going on, the culture of where you're working, to kind of combat that. And it is about how we talk about people who use drugs as well, to making sure that we're using non-stigmatized language, that we actually are embracing people, that we aren't saying, oh, this is your next step to recovery. People may always use drugs. I work with people who this -- I don't know why, like, I can't say to someone who's 70 years old, like, you should quit doing that today. Like, maybe that's what you're going to do, and you're going to die in 10 years anyway. I don't know. But that's not up to me to judge, and it's the same with the people that we're working with. People can make it to work and be at work and all of those things. That's what's important, is people doing their jobs. And so there are boundaries as you shift from service provider to worker, and that's something that, and colleague, that people have to figure out. And then, so we have had successes. So having a supportive management, educating our boards, we're constantly educating people, asking people what they need and how they can participate, offering varying levels of commitment, client engagement, hiring a lot of staff with lived experience, and advocating. So we don't actually ignore the political context, we're constantly We're constantly talking about it. We also pay people. We provide transit. We provide all these other things. I don't think that the pay is good enough, to be honest. I think we could do better. And that's something we have to work on. But that's one of those things where we're like, oh, we got these jobs. Here's the pay. Here you go. But that hasn't really shifted over the last ten years and that's something that needs to shift. And that goes back to funding. And it goes back to levels of government. And it is hard at this time when we are living under austerity. And also, and conservative atmospheres, I haven't forgot about that. But we also have to be committed and genuinely committed to building the capacity of the clients that are accessing our services, to then be those people who are distributing, who are doing, sending out the knowledge around HIV/HEPC. The only way we're gonna address this massive epidemic of a hundred and eighty million people in this world that's impacting people who use drugs is actually having those people being able to do and deliver services and in a meaningful way. And also bringing our, and also supporting and funding the programs. Like nobody should be running out of needles. That should be something, nobody, like if there's a need, that should be constant. We shouldn't have to worry about that because it's really hard in harm reduction. You're constantly under attack. And nobody should be going without. No one should have to be reusing. We should be getting out as much as we can. So I feel for the people in Newfoundland when they're saying like, you know, we're running out of things, running out of supplies. How do we meet that need? It has happened in Toronto where we've also run out of needles. It's not good. So we, I would say that, you know, we've improved access to Hep C treatment and healthcare for highly marginalized population of people. So not only do we give people treatment to Hep C, we also offer primary care. We do have a doctor shortage in Toronto and so not everyone can, who comes to the Community Health Center ends up being able to access our primary care, but we try to find places for them to go. And then also just having client involvement. It ensures this high quality of care, relevancy and accountability. And that's been one of the best things. Having two people on our team who are co-infected with HIV and Hep C, being able to talk to other people. I don't know what that's like. And it's been amazing having those folks involved and addressing HIV and Hep C in their community. So thank you.
I'll just wait for my slides to come. So good morning, everyone, and thank you to the organizers for inviting me to come. This talk, it's just about the results of a evaluation we did of a clinic in New Brunswick. And maybe I'll just take a moment to talk about the problem the clinic was designed to solve. So I'm from New Brunswick, but I had been living away from there for a long time and I moved back in two thousand and six. And at that time, I had an interest in injection drug use and that type of thing. And so I asked them how many people we had in our methadone program. And they said a hundred and forty. And I asked how many were on the waitlist and they said six hundred. So I said, well, what do we do for the people on the waitlist? And they said, nothing. They wait. So I said, well, why are they waiting? And they said, well, they're waiting because there's group and individual counseling required. And when those sessions get full, people have to wait. They said, there's a limited number of doctor appointments. So when the doctor appointments are full, those people have to wait. So they said, the only way we could increase access is by having more resources. So what I proposed to them was that we find a more efficient way of delivering our service. And I'm an ethics guy, so this means that sometimes we have to do what's called a trade-off. So we could say, this service might be beneficial for you, but is it worth the cost? So if the cost of providing a group counseling session or an individual counseling session is we put another two hundred people on a waitlist, as an ethics guy, I would say, well, is that a good trade-off? Is that worth it? Is the harm of leaving people untreated more dangerous than the harm of making people drink methadone without the associated psycho-social counseling or that type of thing? So this was the idea that we had. So this clinic, you know, is called a low threshold, high tolerance clinic. So low threshold means it's easy to get in. All the other programs in the province right now, to get in, you have to call, then you have to show up for an orientation session. If you make it to the orientation session, then they give you a counseling session. After the counseling session, there's a group of people that screen you to see if you're appropriate for their program. And then if they think you're appropriate for the program, they put you on a waitlist. And then hopefully you're still available in six or eight months when they call you. So for this clinic to get in, you can walk in off the street. You can be referred from anywhere as you want to. And all we do is confirm that you're having addiction to opioids, that there's no methadone in your system, but there are other opioids in your system. And then we'll start you on treatment as soon as we can. So it's literally sometimes the same day that people could get in. The high tolerance part is the other end of it. So we don't kick you out, no matter what you do. So if you'd like to leave, you're allowed to voluntarily, but there's no involuntary discharge. So you can use drugs, you can smoke dope, you can use crack, you can bring a gun to the clinic, you can really do whatever the heck you want. It makes it hard on the staff, but the principle is basically expanding access to treatment as far as we can. So that's really what the clinic was and what we wanted it to sort of achieve. But the proof is in the pudding. So then after we opened this controversial clinic, we had to prove to government that at least there's no negative, unintended negative consequences associated with it. So that's what I'll show you today and then we can go through some other things. So I'll just skip all the formalities. So the first thing that we did was we looked at our retention rates. So the philosophy was there's no redeeming qualities of waitlists and untreated addiction is very problematic. So we wanted to at least get people in treatment and keep them in treatment. From there, we looked at illicit drug use, so we looked at opioid use and cocaine use. Because we're, the theory would be if you can keep people in treatment, then are you doing something productive for them? And methadone is designed for the opioids, so we wanted to look at that. Then we looked at the impact on crime. And then we also did a cost analysis. So I'm not gonna go through the economic stuff today. It's very controversial. It's scandalous, so I'll love to talk about it if anyone's interested. All right, so our one-year retention rate. What we did is the clinic opened on August fourth, two thousand and nine. So we observed people from, we looked at every person who enrolled in the clinic between August fourth, two thousand and nine, and August fourth, two thousand and ten. And then we waited till August fourth, two thousand and eleven to get one year of data on each person. So those that entered the clinic on, in two thousand and nine, obviously by two thousand and ten, we had one year of observation of them. But those that entered the clinic on August fourth, two thousand and ten, we had no observation. So we had to wait another year to make sure we had at least one year observation on each person. And the denominator consisted of anybody who ever entered the clinic for any reason and the numerator was those that are still in treatment after one month, or one year, sorry. So we had a ninety-five percent one-year retention rate. You can see that, I can't, I'm getting old, so I can't quite read my slides, but I can look at the lines, right? So there was a hundred and seventy-nine patients who entered the clinic. Out of the hundred and seventy-nine, a hundred and seventy were still there after one year. Three were incarcerated. So the people that were incarcerated continued to drink their methadone while they were in jail and they would be readmitted to the program when they get out. Three, two transferred to other care providers. So these were family docs who said to people, look, you've been my patient since you were born. You had a small problem with this drug-seeking behavior and addiction, but now that you're stable, I'll take you back into my practice and continue prescribing methadone to you and that'll open space in the clinic. Three moved to Fort McMurray. So they said, we're doing well enough that we've got job offers, so we're out there. I have no idea if they continue to drink their methadone there or not. And then one went into witness protection, so we have no idea what happened with that person. So that's our one-year retention rate. So we were successful at keeping people in treatment anyway. And then for the illicit drug use, we looked at opioid use and cocaine use. And here, we had to look at people that were stable. So we couldn't take those that were still in the induction phase and look at their drug use. So here we had a randomly selected retrospective cohort of eighty-four people. And what we did was we looked at their first six urine tests over the first three months of treatment and compared it to six urine tests over three months after stabilizing on methadone, their most recent ones. So the cohort, basically, that number shouldn't say ninety, but, well, that is ninety, but out of the ninety, we had to remove eight people because they were stable transfers from another clinic. So they weren't using drugs when they entered our clinic, so we had to take them out. But on average, people were in treatment for sixteen months when we did this study. Their average methadone dose was seventy-three milligrams. Sixty percent were men and on average, they were about thirty-five years old. And this is what we show at the beginning. So you can read the slide as one out of six, two out of six, three out of six, four out of six, five out of six, or six out of six. So you can see here that twenty-three people tested positive for illicit opioids at least one out of six times at program entry. And then twelve people tested positive six out of six times at program entry. And the importance of this slide is that we just established that at baseline, at program entry, one hundred percent of the people entering the clinic were using illicit opioids. That's the point of methadone, right? And then we compared it to their most six recent urine tests. And you can see there's a new column there, zero out of six. So fifty-six of the people in our cohort tested positive for illicit opioids, zero out of six times. So they actually achieved abstinence. Some people continued to use illicit opioids, so fifteen people tested positive one out of six times and so forth. And when we compare the two, you can see that this one column is the most drastic increase. And these are results that you would expect from a methadone program, so it's not new stuff. The interesting thing is, if you look, I think this will be the pointer. If you look at the one, two, three, four, five and six columns, those people are the ones that in the normal programs would be given warnings, have to sign contracts and then eventually be involuntarily discharged from the clinic. So we didn't do any of those things with those guys. We just let them stay. So all of these were statistically significant. I won't go through the statistical analysis, but we did the exact same thing with cocaine. And for the sake of time, I'll just jump to the last slide. You can read this the same way. Zero out of six, one out of six, two out of six, three out of six, four out of six, or five out of six, or six out of six. And you can see that there was a small increase in people that stopped using cocaine after stabilizing on methadone. But there were some people that just liked using cocaine, so they continued to use it. And once again, there were no negative consequences associated with these people in the clinic. And that difference was statistically significant, but the significance level was pretty low. And then the last one we did was crime. And this was an interesting study and I'm gonna take a moment to talk about it. So the idea is if you can retain people in treatment and you can reduce their drug use, then they don't have to engage in drug-seeking behavior, which means hopefully they wouldn't have to commit as many crimes. So one of the problems, though, is how do you determine if someone commits crimes? So do you look at convictions? Well, obviously, there are more crimes committed than people are convicted. Do you look at arrests? The same problem happens. So this is where we were very fortunate to have an excellent relationship with the police department in St. John. And in fact, the chief of police was one of the major proponents of opening this clinic because he called me one day and said, Dr. Christie, I have a problem I can't arrest my way out of, so we need to do something to solve this. So they have these very robust databases where they keep track of every interaction they have with every citizen on every shift. So they'll say, I met with this person this day because they were a victim of a crime or they witnessed a crime, or they reported a crime, or they were suspected of committing a crime. So we had, we sent our ninety people, that list of ninety, to the police and said, over the past five years, tell us every interaction you had with them. And then they could tell us. And then we looked at only the times where the police said, we suspect this person of committing a crime, and that they were put in our analysis. So this is obviously gonna have an error rate on the other side where there'll be more people, because you could be suspected of committing a crime, but it doesn't mean you're guilty of one. So this is just at the street level, the stuff that the police actually see when they're doing their work. And then we broke it up over time periods. So we looked at twelve to eighteen months before entering treatment, six to twelve months, six months before entering treatment, six months after being in treatment, six to twelve months after treatment, and twelve to eighteen months after being in treatment. And then we even have data now from eighteen to twenty-four that I'll show you today. And this is the instance rate that we did. So we took the number of times the person was suspected of committing a crime in that time period, divided by forty-five years, and then we calculated an instance rate. And then we graph it. And this is what the graph looks like. So you can see that the instance rate was one point two crimes per person per year in the twelve to eighteen months before entering treatment, one point eight, six to twelve months before. Then six months before entering treatment, it skyrockets to two point eight. Then after they get in treatment, within the first six months, it drops a little bit. Six to twelve months later, it drops. And then at twelve to eighteen months later, or eighteen to twenty-four months later, it almost is eliminated. And what I wanna draw your attention to and maybe conclude my remarks with is I think that this graph shows the story of addiction. So twelve to eighteen months before you're compelled to enter a methadone program for some reason, you probably have some personal resources at your disposal that could fund sort of your addiction. But you have to start misbehaving a little bit more once you've exhausted those. So that's where you would start, women would start prostituting themselves, guys would become thugs or that type of thing. Six months before entering treatment, this is where people are sometimes in crisis. And things happen to them that make them decide they really have to enter treatment. So you might get fired, you might lose your kids, who knows what's gonna happen. You might get arrested on a serious thing or the police might be fed up with you. But there's something where you say, I gotta get into treatment. Now, after being in treatment, it takes a while to stabilize people. And all the stuff you did before is catching up with you. So that's where you can see there's still a lot of stuff, interactions with the police during the induction phase. But after we keep them on treatment and get them stable, you can see that behavior really, really phases out. So what I'm gonna conclude with is say that the way that we treat, run methadone programs, mostly in Atlantic Canada anyways, is ass backwards. Because these people that are six months before entering treatment, what do we do with them? We put them on a waiting list. And then the people that are in the first six months of treatment, what do we do with them? We kick them out for misbehaving. So this is exactly the thing I say we probably shouldn't do. So in conclusion, I think if we can retain people in treatment, we can achieve fantastic results for them without all of the ancillary services that make us as care providers feel better, but might not really contribute as much to patient outcomes as we'd like to think they do. So thank you very much.
Wow. Thank you so much to our speakers here today. My name is Zach Marshall. I'm one of the co-organizers of this event this morning, along with Gerard Yetman here and Rachel Landy. And we were so happy to be able to bring in some of our out-of-town speakers through funding from ARN, the Atlantic Interdisciplinary Research Network for Social and Behavioral Issues in Hepatitis C and HIV. I said the full name. And yes, and also with some support from CIHR that, as I said, made this possible. So we've got about ten minutes left to have some question and answer here. And I'm wondering if any of you would like to ask questions to our speakers. We also have a couple of microphones that'll be going around the room. So who has the first question, right here in the back?
So the first speaker, I'm sorry, I can't remember your name, but you were mentioning that one of your challenges in Newfoundland is getting the public and care providers as well to get their heads around the entire issue of harm reduction. So I'm wondering what you're doing in terms of, are you doing anything in terms of educational programs to sort of get the word out about like what's appropriate in terms of harm reduction and how you engage injection drug users in care, which really, from my perspective as an acute care nurse, I know is about making them feel safe. Because I know when they come into hospitals, they're treated so badly that they never wanna come back, right? So it's always a bit of a challenge.
From the research side, that's one of the things that we found as well in talking to people, is the idea that they, they would try and access the healthcare system, but they would be treated very poorly, you know, their, their issues wouldn't be addressed. And so, what we, when we talked to people, they said pretty much that they didn't go, because they, so clearly that is the disconnect. And in terms of the, the education, maybe I'll let Gerard speak to that.
Yeah, the, the program does harm reduction education. We also work very closely with the prisons. We do pre-release programs and addiction programs within the five prisons on the island, the provincial prison system. We also do community, train the trainers, so that our partners within the community are also incorporating harm reduction within their daily work. I think one of the big challenges that we have as an organization is the lack of resources, human and financial, because we are the only aid service organization, and our mandate is the entire province of Newfoundland and Labrador. So, certainly there are major challenges, which is one of the reasons we wanted to do this study, to look at, you know, what is the pathway, and what, what are the things that we need to develop, who are the partners we need to bring on board, to certainly get a handle on this crisis.
Tree?
Hi, my name is Tree Walsh. I did work at Swap for a while, and I just wanted to say that, you know, we have been doing outreach education since 2004. And the most significant thing in my five or six years of doing those talks was at the medical school. And we, we did a presentation to a bunch of residents who are fairly progressed in, in the process of going to medical school. And they were the most against harm reduction group that we came up against. In small towns, or in groups of youth, or whatever, we got the flack. Like, the very first information session I did with a bunch of youth in St. John's, they were disgusted with me, because I wanted to give them needles. "What do you want to give me needles for?" "Well, do you want to get HIV?" And at the end of those sessions, you had a bunch of people who really understood the merits of harm reduction. But those docs, man, they were wicked. "You're promoting the spread of..." "Can't you see we're preventing the spread, or trying to educate people to the potential harms to themselves and others?" But those docs, we just couldn't get it into their heads.
Thanks, Tree. Does anyone else have questions for our panel here? Debbie?
First of all, thank you very much. Excellent presentations. I'm, I'm actually quite, quite impressed with that, the crime study. Thinking in my mind, it'd be really interesting to do something similar in a province that has a very low tolerance with, with, you know, for, for lapses, just by way of comparison. I think it could be quite compelling to present to the funders. Just another comment, going back to, to Tree's comment as well about education. Points well taken, because I speak to the medical students and the nursing students and the pharmacy students, same thing. And, you know, it's really interesting, because the first reaction from pharmacy students is, "I don't want to sell needles to somebody unless they're on insulin," right? Part of the issue is, I think, the, the people who think they're informed, think they know what harm reduction is, but in fact, I don't think they actually understand what harm reduction is. And we have a provincial methadone treatment committee that is comprised of different healthcare providers and members from government and so on. And, no, you're right, users are not represented. And even amongst that group, there's this misconception that the goal of methadone maintenance is to get people off methadone. And, you know, if, if they're still on it after a year or two years, well, you know, we need to be pushing this along. So, there is still a lot of work in, the education piece is going to be multi-pronged. Now, my question is around funding, because Gerard alluded to the point, that's really our big barrier. I wonder if Zoe and Tim could comment on how your programs are funded. And then I had a second question for, for either one of you. I guess if you had some, some words of wisdom for us, some pearls, what would be your first steps in setting up a program here, taking the results of what we've learned from the provincial needs assessment and moving forward?
Our program is funded from different levels. So, we get provincial funding for, from the AIDS Bureau, and there's a Hepatitis C Secretariat in the province of Ontario. So, we're one of the only provinces that has a strategy to address hepatitis C that also has funding attached to it. So, they modeled, there are 16 teams modeled after the teams that started in Toronto, and they're in rural areas across the province as well, which is really important. And so, there's funding from the province. And then our local health units, the city of Toronto, also funds some, our needle exchanges, gives us our supplies. They, we don't, we just put in an order and they deliver it to us. Our peers are paid through, some of them are paid through that funding. And I guess I would have two things. One is, I think, that anybody who's talking about drugs, so, anything that's involving the lives of drug users, whether on any level, if it's a committee, you should have drug users involved, no matter what. So, you're talking about the lives of people who use drugs, they should be involved in everything, the program planning, the service delivery, and at every committee, because part of the problem is stigma and discrimination. You need to have drug users there at the table. And I'm not just talking about one or two, but you need to have a few, because it is an intimidating thing to go and have to be on committees. But also, oftentimes, it'll be a person with a lot more privilege as a user who's on that committee. Oftentimes, they're a white, straight male, who then has, like, the experience of only using whatever drug they're using. So, it's really important to have a diversity of people, also so they can support them and pay them. My other thing would be that when we're talking about crime, we have to be very, very careful. So, I don't want to step on any toes here, but often when we're talking about drug use, we're always talking about people involved in criminal activity. You're forced to be engaged in doing something illegal because of drug policy. But also, oftentimes, when you have access to society's resources, you don't often have to do things to acquire your drugs. You can go and pay for a treatment centre if you want to, you have money to go and pay for your drugs. And it's really different, because we're talking about people living in poverty. And so, that's the, oftentimes, who we're talking about. And I think that's really important, because sometimes you're forced, because of things around social assistance rates being so low, or being unemployed, you're forced to do things that you may not want to be doing because of that. But a lot of drug users don't rip off people, break into homes, and all those things. And I think that's important to keep talking about. I know a lot of really great drug users who don't do those things. And I know people who do, because they're forced to do that, or they, because they have no money. And I think that's important. We have to be breaking down those stigma and stereotypes. And that's often what we're looking at, is like, criminal activity, criminal this, criminal that. You're forced to do those things sometimes. And that's, that's the system that we live in, and that's the problem. That's where we need to be fighting, is the systemic issues that exist that are forcing people to live in these conditions. Thanks.
Yes, we have time for your presentation.
So, with the funding question, our funding is very modest, so it's 169,000 a year. And it pays, the physician that works there is on salary, so he donates a day a week. We had a full-time nurse practitioner, and then mid-person, and a couple of part-time nurses that worked there. It's one, it's less than one-third of the cost of the other provincial programs, that invest 80% of their resources in counselling. And the results are infinitely better than what those clinics achieve for a much lower price. But the real scandal associated with funding methadone is pharmacy dispensing fees. So, as a pharmacist, you'll, you might appreciate this, but methadone's prescribed on a, the dispensing fees, a daily dispensing fee. In Newfoundland, it was about $10 a day for that group of 179 people. They went to the same pharmacy. So, that one pharmacy made $750,000 off of dispensing fees of this, from this small cohort of people. So, so we spend right now $5 million a year in Newfoundland on methadone, and 97% goes to pharmacy dispensing fees. Only 3% go to the cost of medication, because methadone is only half a cent, a cent a milligram. And so, some of you might remember, we used to have something called a penny, and take one half of that, and that's what a milligram of methadone costs. So, on average, our patients are on 73, 75mg, so we're talking about 35 or 40 cents a day for the medication costs. So, my point in Newfoundland right now is, we're spending enough money on methadone, we're just spending it in the wrong place. So, the next battle we're having is saying, take resources out of the counselling aspect, divert it to places where we're going to get the biggest bang for our buck, but then also have a more rational way of dispensing the drug to people as well. That's not as expensive. And then, you know, if we could reinvest that $5 million in treatment, we could achieve treatment on demand for whoever wants it.
We are in our nine, eight, seven, we're down to the last few seconds here, unfortunately.
All right. So, I can't address your second part, but I can talk to you about it later.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, everyone, for coming, and thank you to our speakers.